Edie?
Yes.
This is Bodie.
Here.
This is Casper.
Here.
This is Schaefer.
Here.
This is O'Connor.
Here.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda, number three. So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll take Mrs. Casper.
Perfect timing.
Is there any discussion? This would be the place to insert any other information or business for the agenda?
As long as we can separate number six and have different discussions under the action items.
We'll separate those.
Thank you.
All right, with no further discussion, would you call them?
This is Schaefer.
Yes.
This is Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Edie.
Yes.
This is Bodie.
Yes.
This is O'Connor.
Yes. We are all aware of what has happened in recent days with Robb Elementary in Texas and the thought of unimaginable horror to think about violence inflicted on children in the way that that happened and on their teachers. I'd like to ask for the board to take a moment of silence. Thank you all. Our prayers and thoughts are with their families as they deal with this tragedy. This has brought to mind for me something that I would like to bring forward to the board, which is, we at this point do not require background checks from board members, and yet we have access to buildings, we have access to our students, and I would like to suggest and will be putting forward to the Policy Committee a recommendation to do a policy that the board undergo background checks as a regular part of our work. I have gone in and gotten a background check done. I think it's important for our community to be able to be comfortable with us and would welcome the board's feedback on that.
I think that's a good idea. I have always thought it was odd that we have access to every building in the district and we are not required a background check, excuse me. And, you know, the community has been concerned about things like that, so I too have had a background check this week.
I-
Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Mr. Edie?
Yes, I also agree on the support motion. I got my background checked done and I got my result back today.
Very well, thank you, Mr. Edie. Anyone else?
I mean, again, I, as a parent in the district, I've had multiple background checks, but I recently renewed mine so that it'll be current, so.
Mrs. Bodie?
I don't think that's necessary. I mean, I think in order for us to, you know, I think when a person runs for office typically, you know, I'm actually kind of speechless on this because I have seen that it has been requested and I don't think it's necessary. I think it's a political ruse that is being put on right now by the community, and I don't think it's needed. And I think that you, or not you, but I just think that it is not necessary. It makes sense on why we would want it. But I don't think that other elected officials have background checks, and I think it's, again, it's a political ruse that you four just fell into again, so, thank you.
So my reason for putting that forward is because I think it's important to the community to be able to have trust in us. I don't think that's about politics. I think that's just about the nature of the beast, the fact that we have access to K-12 students. So I will put that forward. Just wanted the board to be aware that that was going to be coming.
I disagree. I do think it's political. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I don't think that everything we do is a political ruse. I do agree with you that most elected officials don't need background checks. However, most elected officials don't have access to 17,000 students. I mean, we, our superintendent has to have a background check. Why would we not have to? But yes, I would support that.
Right.
Yes, Mr. Edie?
I also agree that it is necessary because I'm, if we are here and for the community to have confidence in us, any job you take up, you do background check. I think it is necessary. Let's just do it and get it clear so that the community can have confidence in what who they have trusted, the 17,000 students and over 1,800 teachers too. I think it is necessary.
Well, and I, you know, I have had background checks for, I did coach with girls on the run in another state and potentially it was going to the spring, but the timeline, we missed it. And then I also have had a background check to volunteer at church. So it's not like I haven't had background checks before and you can, you know, we have, we all have histories of volunteering and whatnot, and those provide background checks. So I just think, again, it's a ridiculous political ruse that you guys are falling into, and I do not support it.
Any other final comments?
I don't want to hold our parents to a different standard than we would hold ourselves or our staff. Different background checks for volunteering in a church than what we are required to do because I also had a background check for a church.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move, move on with our agenda, but thank you, board, for your support on that. We will move to the administrative reports. This is Logan, the five-year forecast, please.
Thank you. So it is time for the five-year forecast, the May update to the five-year forecast. So we'll see if I'm able, yay. I don't have much luck sometimes with getting the slides to move along, but. So today I wanted to just start out again with what is the purpose of the forecast? We know it is required by the state of Ohio for school districts to file a five-year forecast twice a year. Used to be October and May. It's been changed to November and May. It does provide us with history. We've got three years of historical information there as well as five years of projections, and that first year of projections being that always is the current year that you're in. So this five-year forecast goes through 2026, which still feels like there's a lot of unknowns projecting out that far. But it also allows us to take a look at long-range planning and, you know, how do we look forward and make decisions today that we need to make that will impact that, that financial outlook into the future? It is a snapshot report, so it's based on, and it's dated today's date because if something changes tomorrow, then the report needs to change. So it's constantly updated. That's why you look at it twice, twice a year at a minimum. But it is a snapshot. The other thing I wanted to mention is, I know we've talked about this, but there will be changes coming forward, so I anticipate the next forecast, which is the November forecast, to require, right now, it just says you have to, every district has to file a five-year forecast. It will now say a board-approved five-year forecast, which makes sense, but it's a change, so.
Slides are not your friends.
No, they are not. So as we look at a forecast, of course, it's a forecast. It's based on assumptions that we make for the future. What are those, what are the challenges as we look at these assumptions and those uncertainties? I just want to highlight a few. I mentioned that this forecast goes through fiscal year '26. We currently are in a two-year, the first year of a two-year biennium with a new state funding formula. We have two additional state budgets included in this forecast. So it is hard to predict what will happen, but we must. It's part of the rules. We have to try and predict that. So what we have predicted for those state budgets is just half a percent increase. We don't know if that's exactly what will happen, but that's what we're predicting. We believe that's a reasonable prediction. We're also going to be updating the strategic plan. So what will come about as you start discussing that? What changes need to be made? Those changes will impact the numbers. We're going to be going through an update to our, our values in this county in 2023, which will impact collections in 2024. That's our biggest revenue item is our real estate taxes, so we're making some predictions on that. And then we have contracts with our employees, but beyond 2024, we have to predict what will happen there. I did not put on this slide, but I think it's pretty well, you know, not just for the school district, but for everyone, just the financial uncertainty of our economy right now is also, it impacts us just like it does everyone else. Okay, so when we looked at this in November and now to May, what changes to the assumptions are included in this forecast? I mentioned the triennial update. In November, we were projecting a 5% increase. We have adjusted that to a more reasonable estimate. I still believe it's conservative. Our last update was over 9% increase, and our last reappraisal, which was in 2020, was over 15%. We've increased it from 5% to 6.8%. It's just something that you will need to continue to take a look at, but we have bumped that up. We also, I mentioned, we have a new state funding formula, so those numbers as we see them now are included in the forecast, but it is still fluid. There are still things we are learning about this state funding formula that as we go along, we will know more. So that's why I said it remains fluid. Our Esser money, our federal COVID relief funds, in 2024, we will need to make decisions on the staffing that are included in those grant funds currently, which include our, our nurses, the MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support staff. That's an initiative for this district to help with learning loss recovery, and our custodial staff. We are currently offsetting those costs with these federal funds. So as we move into 2024, we have assumed that $1.6 million of those personnel costs, those wages, will come back on the general fund. This is an assumption. As you move forward, we're in fiscal year 2022. Next year and the following, you will start learning more, figuring out the MTSS staff, whether all of those folks will remain or whether some other positions will absorb some of those duties and maybe it won't be the full staff. So we've put the figure in here, but more discussion to come. I've also included additional detail in the notes. We, as part of our discussion, when we talked about the concerns and we created the grid, one of those items was we need more detail, and I agree on purchase services. It is such a large line item. And so we have tried to break that apart, and so you're going to see more detail on that when you look at those notes, as well as other expenses. We've kind of put some of the additional detail there. When we look at overall, what are we projecting and what is the percentage increase for the revenues? Again, I like to go back to 2010. I think, I think it's just a good timeline to kind of show us, you know, where we were, you know, what we have kind of gone through in this district. I think it's, it's important to not forget our history, and so that's why I include this on here, not just what's included in the forecast. And you will be able to see, you see those 6.9% and the 7% increases on those revenues. That was the last time we asked for new money, so that was when we got the new levy money. You will also see some, some changes in the revenues. If you recall, we received state cuts during the COVID times in the very beginning. Then some of that was restored. Moving forward, we are predicting very modest growth, and if you take a look at that, it's about 1.5% on the average increase in our revenues. When we take a look at the expenditures, on the expenditure side, you also, I also like to have this because you can see when we made those deep cuts in 2012 and in 11, 12, 13, you can actually see the picture where we did reduce our spending. And then you can look forward and you can see that the expenditures that we are predicting, the growth, see the 4% there in 2020, 24, and remember I mentioned we're adding back on those staff members that are currently paid from Esser. So that's why you see that jump there. But overall, it's about a 3% growth in expenditures that we are projecting. And then when you put it all together with the cash balance, you know, and we talk about the spending deficit, these bar charts, I think, show, they show the story. So the blue bar, that's your revenues. When the blue bar is higher than the red bar, then you have a spending surplus. Your revenues are exceeding your expenditures. When your expenditures are exceeding your revenue, you're going to see that red bar above the blue, and you will see it in 2010, 11, and 12. And then we reversed that trend in 2013. So 2022 marks a decade that we have reversed that trend. So while you're reversing that trend, you will also see that green line, which is your cash. So that cash has built up over time because you have had a spending surplus. The yellow bar is representative, you have a policy that says that the goal is to have at least 90 days of cash. So you will see that we are far above that board policy goal of 90 days. And then you will see in 2024, where we're predicting to start dipping back into our cash, you will see the cash balance starting to dip. This is the grid. We had the two meetings where we talked about, you know, let's discuss, what are those concerns? How can we address them? And we knew that we were not going to be able to solve all the issues before today, but we wanted to start talking about them. We wanted to start addressing them. So I've put this chart in here. I think it's important to capture it, to also continue to say, you know, have we addressed this? No, when are we going to address this? So from this chart, class sizes, we know that's a pretty big discussion, a staffing discussion. So I'm going to talk about that in a little bit. Purchase services, we have put further detail in the notes for purchase services. If there's additional work to do on that, we can continue on that, but we have begun to dive deeper into that and to provide more clarity on that. High school busing, we're going to be talking about strategic planning. That's a discussion for strategic planning, so more to come with that. Diversity department, again, that's really strategic planning, but we did talk about the cost, and that was shared at the last board meeting. Permanent improvement needs, we continue that discussion with our facilities meetings that we have every month, and we're beginning those community meetings on that. My recommendations, I, I believe I'm sharing them with you today. We did talk about OHSAA, and I shared the, the dollar amount we're spending there, but again, strategic plan. Esser Impact, I've talked about how we've included those dollars in the forecast in 2024. SEL, that's, again, I feel like a broken record, strategic plan. And then the spending deficit, we're going to talk about how we, how I believe we should be discussing that. Okay, so timeline of further discussion. So these are two of the big areas that, and Matt and I talked about this. So during July, that board meeting would be a great time to sit down and dive into what is our current staff? How has it changed over the past? Is it meeting our needs currently and into the future? But to really dive into that. And Matt and I talked, and we believe July makes sense for that conversation, so at your July board meeting. And then in August, to discuss the reboot of the update to the strategic plan. And so Matt can talk about that in August and lay out a timeline for that. But we also talked about, and you might want to mention, we don't want to compete in a negative way with the facilities master plan discussion as well. So trying to time those two at the same, you know, in the most positive way is going to be important too.
It'll be interwoven.
Thank you. I know I'm getting help from the back. Okay, so when we talk about the spending deficit and that conversation, these are just topics that, that as I look at it, I think these are all parts of that discussion, and that include the timeline. So the timeline, we've talked about, we're predicting 2024 is when we will see a spending deficit. The cash balance, we've talked about how we've been able to build up that cash balance. But your policy also, while it sets that minimum, that 90 days, you also have a policy that says after it reaches a certain threshold that your superintendent can make recommendations to spend some of those, those funds above that threshold. So kind of looking at those policies in relation to that cash balance, I think, is important. Your rainy day fund, you've established a rainy day fund, and you're building that rainy day fund up as well. So that goes into this discussion. And then again, a broken record, strategic plan. And the reason why I don't have a date on when do we talk about spending deficit discussion because I believe some of these other topics, as you have that discussion about the strategic plan, it will facilitate some of these. So I don't have an exact date until we have the reboot of the strategic plan and have that all laid out. Okay, financial strength of the district. I mentioned, we are finishing this year a decade of balanced budgets for the district. Who would have imagined? Yes, who would have imagined? That's, that is something to celebrate. As well as, this is our fifth consecutive year that our cash balance has exceeded seven months of operating expenditures. So we are healthy. We are financially healthy. Even in 2026, at the end of this five-year forecast, we are predicting that the cash balance will be at six months. So that's still very healthy. The rainy day fund is at $7 million. We have not requested any new money from our community since November of 2013. We hate asking for additional money. Nobody likes that, right Superintendent Miller? It's the worst part of our job.
The worst.
It's not the worst. I agree. It's not the worst. It is, it's right up there, top three, top five. But we are predicting no operating levy need in this forecast. So if I were to try to take a look at how long could our money sustain us? And I hate doing these things, but I get asked this all the time. So let's make some predictions. Let's look in our crystal ball and say, how long could we go? I went back, this chart is shown 2013 because, remember, that was the last time we asked for money. If, and remember, I said if you look on average, our revenue is growing by one and a half percent. And our expenditures, what was the average it was increasing? Three. So all I did is I applied those averages. This is simple. This is, there is, all I know is this will be wrong. This will be wrong. But just so we can have a conversation about it, I've applied the one and a half percent growth to revenues, the 3% growth to expenditures beyond 2026. If you apply that simple math to it, you would fall below your 90, your 90-day threshold in cash in 2030, and you would run out of cash in 2032, almost 20 years after you ask for new money. So when I hear people who might question if we're being financially responsible with our taxpayer dollars, I have no question in my mind that this district is. And I will tell you, when I came in the district in 2011, this is far beyond what I hoped for. It really is, and this is as a result of many, many things. But again, all I know is this will be wrong, but it at least is something to just kind of say, hey, if we were to predict, what would it look like? So I throw that out there for you, just for conversation, quite honestly. And in summary, we're, we're ending this year with a spending surplus, not a deficit. Again, we believe that, I don't believe, I know, your future forecasts are going to require board approval, so that will be a change. The discussion timelines that I've put in, into this presentation, as well as any future ones that you will set, you need to honor those. You need to have those discussions and sincerely keep them on the calendar. Your long-term financial sustainability is always going to be the goal, so that's, that has not changed. And again, I want to repeat, there is no operating levy need that is predicted in this forecast. So with that, I open it up for questions or comments.
I'll start off. No, I think, and Jenny, thank you for the work on this. I know we all appreciate it. I would say economic conditions are more uncertain than ever in my time on the board, certainly. In my time on the board, certainly forecasting on many fronts is not necessarily positive. So I think. Uncertainty with the biennial budget continuation or not continuation, depending on the decision they make at the State House on the fair school funding formula. The loss of Esser funds in 2024. I think you've looked at this fairly conservatively, and I think that's the direction we need to be taking with it. I'm very glad that we have put into our conversation, the discussion on deficit spending. I think that's a discussion we need to have as well as what does our staffing look like? And how are those needs changed? There's a lot of work that needs to be happening, happening concurrently, as you pointed out, a strategic plan, staffing issues. Our work on the facilities plan. And one of the things I don't think that we have here, which plays into. The need for a levy in the forecast would be whether or not. We do have operational savings coming out of the facilities plan and we still don't have those numbers. So that's another, I think, big part of looking at whether or not that's in the forecast or not. There's also a policy about having a balanced budget, which was not on that timeline and should also be a part of our discussion as well.
Well, I would include that in that policy, the bullet for policy. I think you need to review all of those policies. And yes, that's one I did not mention, but it is absolutely one that was adopted at the same time.
And I think it wouldn't hurt us as a part of that discussion, just to have a refresher for all of the board on it. And with those policies, I, when we have that discussion as well. So I appreciate the work that went into this and the fact that we are going to be discussing some hard topics as well in the near future. Thank you for that. Or other comments or questions?
Go ahead. Thanks.
I just, again, Jenny, this is a lot of work and we appreciate it and we thank you. And I agree with Mrs. O'Connor that for me, the most important part is that we continue to have the dialogue on the timelines. Because we often say we're going to discuss it and we don't all, and, and I, believe me. I know there was a little thing called COVID that messed us all up, so I understand that. But for me, I think that's the most important part is the ongoing and sticking to the timeline. And I appreciate this.
Others?
Yeah, I think at this time, I definitely consider this, the budget a work in progress. You know, I do not have all the answers that I've asked for. And you know, it's not a big deal. I understand, I've asked for a lot and Jenny, I, you, I appreciate, you know, what you've been able to do with our finances. I mean, just seeing it in a graph, the improvement that we have gone through, I really appreciate that. And. You know, I, I just received some of the items that I, that I asked for yesterday. But I think, again, there's still more things that I have not received. And I think this year I'm abstaining from voting because I feel that. There is more information that I need and I think by next year I'll be able to make a, an informed vote. But I hope it's okay with everyone, you know, I didn't receive, receive the items that I needed to make an informed vote, so I'm going to abstain.
Can I ask, just out of curiosity, what you want that you didn't get?
I'm just. So we did not get the contracts with the SEL. I also wanted contracts under a year for paid services. I wanted all contracts and agreements and payment of contractors offering Lakota staff, faculty and students and any training, diversity, social, emotional. Equity, inclusion, or any other title not related to academic content. I would like a total cost of each contractor of each fiscal year. I would also like a total cost with total amounts paid to each of our legal counsel firms or representatives. I would like to have the totals for these expenses for 2019 to 2020, 2020 to 2021. And then year 2021 to 2022 so far. And I also asked for a copy of legal counsel that we use from 2019 to today. As well as, I believe I, I received contracts. Our contract with insurance company that defends the school district when we are sued. I'm, I know I asked for contracts in the beginning, but I don't believe those contracts that I've received are any of these contracts.
Can I ask a question? Because you know Jenny, I am not the financial guru, but the things that she, that Mrs. Bodie is asking for. Are those, don't really affect the five-year forecast? Aren't those more? Our financial appropriations and isn't that a different discussion? Again, I'm just trying to understand.
So. I, well, first of all, it, it is a lot of information, a lot of details, which also. And we've talked about this, I like to not just give you a data dump of a, like hundreds and hundreds of pages. But to also explain to you, included in this is, you know, this. We will be approving appropriations. So we will do temporaries in June that will be effective July 1. And then you will finalize appropriations in September. I do believe that. Quite a bit of the items and the details are more directed about setting the budget. And approving how we're spending our money instead of. But.
Right.
You know, I. It's a, you know, I also think it's a time where, you know, it's no secret I'm leaving. And so if there is a different way, the way that we have presented our financial reports on a monthly basis. If you want to look at. The detail you get there and maybe you revise your monthly reports to the board. There are many ways to address it. That would meet the needs of the entire board. Now, I also understand that there could always be. A board member who would like to see additional information for. Their knowledge. But no, you are correct. There, I was not able to get all of that information together. Along with finalizing the document in a timely basis. And we can talk about, you know, timelines and how to get all that together. But, but I would encourage all of you to look at those financial reports that you're getting on a monthly basis. Is there a change that you would like to see? Is there a different way that you would like to have information? I would also say as far as contracts. That's a policy discussion too, because your policy also sets boundaries on. When contracts are brought, are brought to the board versus how we manage them on a daily basis. So there's a lot to the conversation, I guess, is what I'm saying. So.
I had a question. So are you saying that there's a policy that says that a board member cannot see requested contracts?
Oh, no, 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 no.
That's not what you said.
Approval of contracts. You have a policy for a purchasing policy. That sets forward. What our process is for purchasing in this district. And it sets forth the guidelines on contracts. And when we have to bring contracts for board approval versus.
Got it. So you're discussing the, do we do like a $25,000 cap to bring it to the board? Or do we do a year, anything over a year contract? Which I would like to. I would like maybe more understanding why it went from 25,000 to a year contract. I'm not sure when that happened, but it used to be $25,000. That it would have to be brought to the board and then it changed to anything over a year contract. So that allows, to me, that allows a little bit more. Or less management from the board with how the money is being spent. And that is some area where I would like to see the contracts and what contracts we are. Signing and, and the amount spent because if it's. My thought process on this is if it's over 25,000, we could have a contract that's a thousand dollar or a hundred thousand dollars. Just throwing a number out there. And we wouldn't have any say over what we are spending a hundred thousand dollars when it used to be 25,000 dollars. So I think it allows for more accountability and transparency, which is really important for the community to see. So that is my thought.
And I would encourage you to review that policy at your next policy meeting. I can give you some history and as well as I'm sure Chris Passarge could also. You know, we do, I, I'm not going to dig into it too deep, but we've got lots of structure on how we do that. How many quotes are required? We do have state laws that define bidding and all of those things. But it is a good thing to review that. And as a board to say, is this what we still believe we should do? And if not, then you can make changes. But yeah, I think it's a good idea to just to bring that policy back out and to understand exactly what we do now. Which, if you feel comfortable with the policy, you might not request to see all of the contracts in the future.
Cause it's part of that is word management.
Which would make it a lot easier on everyone if, you know. If there was an understanding and everyone felt comfortable with, with the policy. So.
Well, I don't mind this job being hard. I think sometimes, you know, the easier, the better is kind of a bad way to look at it. I think sometimes this is a board, we are the board and so even though it might be hard work, we still have to. Do it, you know, and so I'm not concerned personally about it being an easier way for the board. Because I think it's our job to dig into these numbers.
It's not our job. Our job is governance, that's management. That's why we have a superintendent, a treasurer.
So I'm going to ask for no audience participation. Thank you. All right, may I ask Mrs. Logan when that information was requested?
I don't have the date. It's, has it been a couple of weeks ago, Mrs. Bodie?
Last meeting, I think. Last meeting is when you requested that information Jenny was asking.
Well, this information was requested on May 12th. And then we did discuss, I think it's been two meetings that we've had discussion over the SEL contracts. Last meeting, you did bring, but bring up the graph that you created, but I had. A change of wording on the SEL. It was more. I wasn't saying that I disapproved of it. I was just wanting to know where the finance was coming from and where. And what contracts are signed regarding SEL.
So we can work on making sure I understand exactly what you. I'm going to go back through and I, my next step will be to lay out, here's what I believe that you've requested. And then make sure that that's exactly what you request. And then we can make sure that we're hitting all of those marks. So I think that's our first next step is to make sure I understand exactly what you're.
I mean, I would love to schedule a meeting with you.
I would love to do that.
Look at the computer. I mean, and I mean, if it's just easy as, okay, let's break that down, print that out, let's break this one down and print it out. I'm sure if you click on it, it'll have like a breakdown of everything, da, 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 da. And then, you know, that's just what I'm expecting in my head, but I don't know if that's the reality of the situation. It seems rather easy to me on the computer if you have everything in there appropriately. But again, I'm not.
So let me suggest that you set up the time to do that with Mrs. Logan.
I, I would appreciate that too.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Dean?
Yes, Ms. Jenny, Ms. Logan. Thank you for giving the summaries and. I, my little understanding of finance is budgets and forecasts are not set on stone.
Right.
And they are work in, work in progress. I thank you for especially giving us. If the concern that you think would be. Maybe impacting positively or negatively to the forecast. And as I look through the list, the five-year forecast concern. I see that a lot of areas that interest me. So that makes it easier for me to do the review and as we go along. So I want to thank you for the document and for the work you do and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
I just, as I was going through the notes noted that you were 99.9% accurate in your revenue assumptions. So while you often talk about how it changes and how many variables there are. I think you've got it to an excellent science of making sure that your assumptions are working effectively for us. And it's typically, you spend less and that variation is a little bit greater. And that was a 2% lower spending than you anticipated. Cause I think you try to over anticipate spending and under anticipate revenue. So appreciate that diligence in the forecast. And also all your detailed work while in the midst of changing to a new computer system over this last period of time. So appreciate the diligence and making sure this is all accurate in the midst of a challenging work environment.
Yeah, we did switch over to a new financial software. Last Friday, so it's, yeah.
Will this allow us to have our information on open checkbook?
So open checkbook is a discussion topic. Actually, we brought up transparency during our last. Community conversation. And I, I will just tell you. As I rank things with transparency tools, that would not rise to the top for me. There are other options that are better. But I also would stress that we are transparent in many ways. We are working on a financial prospectus, which will be mailed out in the coming weeks to every household member. And we also have lots of things on our website. Again, we haven't solved it all, but I would encourage the district as you're looking for. If you're looking for a transparency tool. Westchester has one with, I think it's OpenGov, which I believe is. A better option than Ohio Checkbook. I can give you names and names of colleagues who. Believe that Ohio Checkbook is not the best option for a transparency tool for their community. So there, there are options out there. And that might be something that you might want to explore. But I would encourage you, if you want a transparency tool, I would look at OpenGov, which is what Westchester Township is currently using.
And I believe we have had this conversation several times in the past, but we were waiting for the software change. It literally just happened last weekend.
Correct.
So it's not that that has not been discussed, it has.
Yeah.
So it might be time for the board to have that discussion again, now that that software change has been done.
Can you elaborate? I know we don't have a lot of time, but just a few reasons why. You would suggest. OpenGov over the checkbook.
Why don't I put a communication together and I'll give you some examples. I can send that to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, Board? Right, we will move along. Thank you Jenny for that work. We'll move to number six, the superintendent and treasurer action items. There's been a request to separate these out, so we will vote separately. First item A, approved personnel items. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved. I have discussion.
We have, we're going to do a motion first.
Second.
There'll be a moment for discussion.
Okay, sorry.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Schaefer and Mrs. Casper. Thank you. Discussion, Mrs. Bodie.
Sorry about that. I thought we were moving to approve. I'm still catching this. Action items, but so I had a quick question. I was just, Matt, I was looking through the, the. Administration and staff that have resigned or retired. And I noticed that 59 people have left since Jan, since January. And then narrowing it down a little bit, there, East has lost 10, where West has lost two. So can you speak a little, I know this is on the spot, but can you speak a little bit to that? Why we've had 59 teachers and administration resign since January?
I think there's a variety of different reasons. Some of those are retirement. Some of those people have gone on to different positions in other school districts. Some people, quite frankly, are just burned out on education right now, coming out of COVID. In terms of number of employees, I mean, when you have close to a thousand. Teachers and administrators combined, the numbers don't seem as bad. But this is not a problem unique to Lakota. It's a national problem going on right now on top of other national problems we have going on right now. So there's nobody, nothing alarming from that side of things, other than people are, are getting out of the profession.
I would say that's 5%. So you said over, out of a thousand, so that's 5% of our teachers have left since January. So I mean, it would be interesting to compare that to other school districts, but.
So, I mean, it would be interesting to compare that to other school districts, um, but can you speak to why more people are leaving East versus West?
10 versus 2. It probably swung 10 versus 2 the year before, but um, there's nothing that is alarming to those numbers for me right now. But if you know something, let me know.
I'm, well, that's why I'm asking you.
Yeah, send me an email.
Miller, is that an unusual number for this time of year?
No, not, not at all, especially with everything that's going on.
All right. Any further questions?
Yep, thank you.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Jenny, please call the roll.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Mrs. Bodie?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes. We'll move to item B. I'll take a motion in a second for approving minutes of May 9th, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bodie. Discussion? Seeing none. Jenny?
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bodie?
Yes.
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes. We'll move to item C, approval of the five-year forecast. I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Thank you, Mrs. Bodie. Is there discussion?
Again, I'm going to abstain from voting only because I do not have all of the information that I need. And, and again, by next year, I mean, I will have more of the conversations, but I do not have enough information that I need to make.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Logan?
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. Bodie?
Abstain.
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll move to the final item on our agenda, which is public comments. Again, as a reminder to those who are signed up to speak, please keep it to three minutes. When you see it start turn, starting to turn yellow, please wrap your comments up so that you are completely finished by the time your three minutes elapses. You do not need to state your address, because that's already on our sheet for being signed in. And please direct your comments to the presiding officer.
Madam President, it says 45 minutes. Do we have 45 minutes or 30 minutes?
30 minutes.
Okay, thank you.
What does? I'm sorry, I believe that's an error on the agenda.
It's 30 minutes, as always.
It is. It's 30 minutes. That's an error.
It is 30 minutes. We apologize for that. I think we'll be able to get through the people that we have on the sign-in sheet. But thank you for raising the question. All right, we will start with, and I'll call your name and ask you to go ahead and line up when you hear your name, so that we can move through this list efficiently. Mrs. Nix, you'll be up first. Mr. Alward, you'll follow. Mr. Cooper, you'll be after Mr. Alward. We're not timing your walk-up, it's okay.
So hi, good afternoon. My name's Linda Nix. I live in Lurie Township. I appreciate the opportunity to be heard today. First, a huge shout out to Jenny Logan for her stellar closing statement at the last meeting. You are a solid rock star. Um, at the last board meeting, uh, a, a board member said that critical race was probably in Lakota. I, so I reached out via email to the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and the executive director of curriculum and instruction, asked simple yes or no to the following two questions. Is CRT in Lakota's curriculum? Is CRT being taught in Lakota? All three of them responded no. I sent the same email to all five board members. One responded no, but added there may be some, some believe that social emotional learning is CRT. Another said they didn't know, but directed me to ask the person that had made categorical statements in that regard. To the four members that did not answer a yes or no, I followed up with an email saying, as of today on 5/17, to the best of your knowledge, is CRT being taught or a part of Lakota curriculum? One responded that the superintendent had stated publicly that CRT isn't part of the curriculum. This was a deflection and did not answer my question, so I followed up with a third email. To the best of your knowledge, is CRT being taught or a part of Lakota curriculum and received no response? The member that responded, I don't know, to my first email responded to my follow-up email, unfortunately, I don't know. I'm not sure why it's unfortunate. In my mind, that answer should be fortunately, no, it's not here. If, it's, you're looking for something that's not here, and just to pacify your backers and you're sorry you don't have anything to give, no. The member, um, we had one board member that has repeatedly asked for the definition of it, and another that has made up their own definition. And I was in fourth grade and I was in a library club. It, our motto was, we never guess, we look it up. It's not hard to find the, you know, the, I'm lost now. Um, the condensed version is that it is, race is not biological, it's sociological. It affects how one is treated, especially by the legal system. If you want the full definition, it's not hard to find. Quit trying to make social emotional learning part of CRT. They are two separate things. This isn't a hard question to answer. If it just, address it. If it's no, quit looking for something that isn't there. It's like history is repeating itself via Salem witch hunt or McCarthyism. For the Ohio School Board Ethics, the first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of all students attending, attending the public schools. Quit playing politics and do your jobs.
Thank you, Mrs. Nix, Mr. Alward, Mr. Cooper, you will follow, and Jerry Dekalowski. You'll be up after that.
Madam President, school board members, administration. I usually get shut up, shut down halfway through my speeches, so I gave my paperwork to the board members prior to speaking, so I can keep what I say brief. And I thank you for giving me that time, but I'm extremely concerned about student privacy when the students are in school or they're learning online. A recent breach uh, by Patel, a contractor of Lakota schools, is an example of how that, how, what can happen when third parties are hired and they're not monitored. That student breach was handled inappropriately from my perspective, because normally you don't blame Patel, you normally take on responsibility yourself, and just work with Patel to handle paying you for how they take care of it. And normally when there's a breach, they do offer the people whose information have been reached, breached, some kind of protection, but I'm not going to get into that. Lakota, he has a lot of third-party contracts, as best I could find. Patel, Google, PanoramaEd.com, BoardDocs.com, and TradeO, School Management Presence, which is our website. The first, Patel has already had a breach. I gave you a list of the breaches that Google has had. That's included in your paperwork. You have a contract with PanoramaEd.com, which is an SEL, SEL company, developed by a recent graduate of Stanford University, and his only goal in setting up that company is to sell it. And he has a very small staff, and what supports that company right now are some sweet deals in New York and New Jersey, where he got a lot of schools to sign up for the program. He also has a relative in the Biden administration that has helped him do that. But I've, if you look at onsite and see him in meetings, you'll find out that all he wants to do is sell it and get out of it. We also have BoardDocs.com. We have in, in TradeO, which is a school management presence. I have no idea what that is. I think Easy Pay was the one that we had a problem with, or I don't know. I think you're thinking about login, these are from memory, login.com, and I don't know whether they are secure or not. I could find out more, but since Lakota doesn't use the Ohio Checkbook, I can't find out. I looked at Sycamore Community Schools and I could find the answers to those questions. I looked at, there are other school districts and it.
Mr. Alward, could you please wrap up your comments, sir?
Okay, please.
Please wrap up your comments.
Okay. Um, and uh, what, what did you say?
Your time is up, sir.
It can't be. Okay. I gave you the documentation, uh, given the current leadership, and I agree with Jenny on this one, and I would like to compliment her for that report, because this is the first time I've been at a live meeting. Given the per, current.
Mr. Alward, I'm sorry, sir. Thank you for the information you've provided us, but we do need to move on.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd better move to Kentucky where they give you five minutes to talk.
Thank you for the information. Mr. Cooper is up. Mrs. Dalkowski is next, and Mrs. Zeparian will follow.
Good afternoon. I'm uh, here to talk CRT, COVID response team. Uh, see what I did there? I would never bait and switch you on what I promised to talk about. Due much respect for this board. I would like to talk about it, though, and uh, I believe that I, I, COVID is here to stay, and accordingly, we need to collectively decide whether the COVID response team ought to continue to exist. I propose that it ought not, on the basis that the COVID response team going forward could be, and in my opinion ought to be, 17,000 individual conversations. It should result in decisions that look like this room, where some of us have said, hey, discretion is the better part of valor. I'm going to mask up before I come. Others have decided not to. Those decisions, to the extent we can put them in the uh, parents' laps again, would be great. So I propose, uh, or I request, if you please, it's your job to propose, but I request, to the extent that any or all of you agree with me a little bit, please, I ask you humbly, respect, please, make a motion for uh, an addition to the agenda consideration of whether the Lakota COVID response team ought to continue to exist. Further, if it is decided subsequent to that, that yes, it needs to continue to exist because reasons, what I would uh, also ask you to consider is removing the influence of the Butler County Health District ODHCDC, the whole alphabet soup. By influence, I'm referring to, for example, not uh, in particular, but the last of uh, your correspondence's Superintendent Miller in February that says, as always, we will continue to adjust our COVID protocols and guidelines as we receive direction from the CDC, Ohio Department of Health, Butler County, alphabet soup. Uh, Mr. Brown's uh, emails all throughout the last two years said something to that effect. As always, you know, these decisions that I'm telling you about, we're deferring to the greater expertise. Board, that expect, expertise is misplaced. It's misplaced because we have collectively confused scientific expertise, which is one thing, and risk mitigation expertise, individual decisions, which is quite another. Science is not equipped to make normative decisions. By normative, I don't mean to be pedantic, and forgive me if it sounds this way, but a normative decision is this room ought to be 50 feet by 50 feet. A scientific conclusion is this room is 30 feet by 120, or whatever it is. It's just as foolish to say, based on your scientific wisdom, uh, help us make a risk mitigation decision. That's just as foolish as saying there ought to be a professional mathematician in every budget review Mrs. Logan conducts, because, you know, there's math in there. It's not necessary. So please, at the next opportunity, raise the issue. Can we disband this board? And if not, absolutely nobody but Lakota people on it are influencing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Calling Mrs. Zeparian. Okay, Mr. One moment, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Argo will be up next.
Okay.
Um, state your name, please.
Okay, Jerry Jakowski or Dizakowski, however you want to read it. I want to address the apparent transparent curriculum report card of the public schools of today, which is to ask, is the money spent wisely according to the needs of our children? When I was attending schools, we were taught four Rs: reading, writing, arithmetic, and religion. Write reason according to the natural law, that is, the law written in every person's heart that supersedes all of man's laws, which even way back to Plato, recognized in his writings that there is such a thing as a natural law. You know, everyone recognizes that murder, stealing, lying are morally reprehensible. We hear it loud and clear nowadays, follow the science. I believe I learned back in third grade or before that even, that our bodies taken in oxygen, take in oxygen, and we expel carbon dioxide, common sense, right? So why are our children, whose bodies are growing and who are constantly moving, need more oxygen than healthy adults taught that masks protect us? My six-year-old little Arlo learned his lesson well. When he sneezed into his mask, he simply wiped his face with his mask and turned it inside out so to, so as to keep it on. As I protect, as I proceeded through school, I learned at the appropriate high school age, the biology of our bodies. Not at six years of age or three years of age. I learned that at the moment of conception proceeding to birth, every cell of a girl's body could be detected as female, and a boy's body as male. So that it doesn't matter what trappings are placed on a body or removed from it, does it make it, does it change our sex? We still are what God created us to be. To pretend that we can change it is cruel. Is a cruel lie on a child who, like most young people, ask in the growing up process, who am I? What am I supposed to be? What am I supposed to do? In the real world, not in the academic world, but in the real world, one plus one equals two. Not what we are taught, that we can change that law. Psychology 101, as can readily be observed through daily living, says that a six-year-old boy often hates girls and girls, boys. Does that mean they are gay? It is a natural wholesome development as they form understanding through same-sex relationships that last a lifetime, until puberty, of course, hits. To exploit this stage is less than a failing grade and defies a thinking rational mentality. This is not to deny what science has shown, that because of a rift in the relationship between a boy and his father.
I'll have to ask you to wrap up. Your time's up now.
My time was up?
Yeah, right up here in the board.
Yes, it goes fast, I know.
I timed it. I thought I was, okay, I, I will be happy to say this. Um, okay. So, from a reliable source, I would say this, that it has been said that if anyone causes a child to fall into Britishion, may a uh, stone be wrapped around his neck and be thrown into the sea.
Thank you. Hi. Mrs. Zeparian is up. Mr. Argo will be up next, and then Mr. McCall?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my family has COVID, so I wanted to wear a mask and stay in a hotel. So I wanted to address everybody who wants me. Thanks for taking a picture of me. Um, I appreciate.
Could you say your name, please?
I'm sorry, I just got a photo taken. My name is Rachel Zeparian. I'm a Lakota resident. I'm a parent of two kids in this school since the whole time that we've seen this district make a turnaround. And I want to thank you for starting the meeting with a really appropriate moment of silence. And I appreciate the safety concerns that most of you have taken on. I thought we would vote at this meeting about the background checks, so I want a follow-up of when that will be voted on, or if that'll be mandated. Um, I'm talking, guys. You're not supposed to talk. Okay. So, I think it's really appropriate that we have more secure access within our buildings. We all know what happened. We also know what happened earlier this month, when some people felt that they are above the rules and can just go into a building with a giant purse on their own. So, as we think about the building master plan, I hope these security concerns are also part of the strategy. Putting in new buildings that have more robust security to make sure something like this doesn't happen in our backyard. And as we're thinking about the building master plan, I want us to think about truly building a better future. This would also adopt using green innovation as a strategic choice as we look about building, buildings. Green innovation would help us keep the cost down as well. So what I'm talking about is thinking about buildings that are self-sufficient with electricity. They use the water in the building well, and they have better waste programs. We're not currently really addressing recycling in our schools. We can also use the school land to help pollinators. This would help on milling expenses. This would help on milling expenses as well, and it would help the public land be used for better reasons. So there's lots of opportunities in this community to bring in some of this strategic thinking. There's grants that we could have to help make these cost-effective. So I wanted to understand, are you opening the conversations for community input at the strategic level? Or are we just looking at like a yes or no? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mrs. Superior. Mr. Argo is up, and Mr. McCall, and Mrs. Addington.
My name is Alex Argo. I'm not sure why we're having discussions about COVID protocols at this point because in the schools, there's essentially no COVID requirements anymore placed upon the students in the district at this point. I'm kind of baffled by that. I did want to talk briefly about the five-year forecast. I'll keep it short. Just in Butler County, Madison Schools just failed an operating levy. Ross and Tallawanda are both putting operating levies up on their ballot this November. Both, I'll add, for more than the current forecasted cost of the, the current forecasted net cost of the master facilities plan impact to Lakota taxpayers. And as, as was noted earlier, there's potential operational savings coming from our master facilities plan. Is there predicted deficit? Yes, but I think we're doing what the reality is of Ohio's school funding system, not reckless spending. And I think we're doing pretty good, all considering. We have many challenges ahead that need to be addressed. Class size, this is an early childhood, and figuring out how to navigate the master facilities plan funding will be a challenge. And whoever replaces Mrs. Logan will have some very large shoes to fill. So thanks for all you've done so far. And I'm hoping that we can get this master facilities plan worked out. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Argo. Mr. McCall will be up next, and then Mrs. Addington. And following Mrs. Addington. Mrs. Greenler.
Benjamin McCall, thank you and good afternoon. Something I was going to talk about, but was already talked about, solar energy. I know that there's a lot within the master plan, and most of the things I'll be asking is around the master plan. But I don't know if any of the details include anything solar or energy efficient. And if we are, if we do choose one of the plans that have buildings, I would like to see that because even my family, we've been thinking about for years, but we're starting to think more about possibly doing solar and how the cost effectiveness could be, as well as net metering kind of brings back impossible revenue. Have no idea how that elongates into a school system, but it'd be nice to be able to think about that and to bring that up during the upcoming community meetings when those discussions happen. Another thing, safety. With the recent school shootings, I know that during the community info meetings, there may be a lot of requests for safety measures, like more locks, double doors, metal detectors. And I don't disagree with some of those factors, especially when it allows our children to be more safe. But I'd also ask that the board and the administration, that while you go through these community meetings and those things start to come up, to stay away from anything that potentially could have our children feeling like they're locked down because it's an educational environment. And, and it's a tough, it's a tough thing to be able to work through, especially with everything going on. But all should be as non-invasive as possible. And it's also good to know that public schools, in comparison to private schools and other parochial schools, have a lot more protocols in place to be able to protect that. And that's important to address. So when the community meetings start to go on, there's going to be a lot of pressure in different areas. But the biggest thing is I don't want my kids to feel like they're walking into a school like it's zoo or they're in a jail or they're in a prison and locked down. It should be safe for educational. That being into protocols, which kind of got brought up today, and I didn't think to speak to, but a little bit to the gut, I understand mixed feelings around background checks. But I know ever since I could remember, every time I've been involved with my kids' educational environment with sports, any access on that end, I've had to have a background check. All parents, administration, volunteers, teachers, anyone with regular or unfettered access to our kids should have a background check. And I applaud the board for bringing up that action to also possibly close any gap that met, that may have been created before. And then the final thing in relation to some of the things people brought up, but really speaking to the effect of mental health. We've been talking about that for a long period of time, and we've seen the results of what bad things can happen as a result of mental health of the shooting that happened this week, an eighteen-year-old kid. We have no idea what went on with him. We don't know, there's no history of mental health. But with that in mind, I think things like SEL, things that teach empathy, things that allow us to speak and address those things on a regular basis. Any academic program that could be a part of that to make our kids better people and get us to talk, which is what a lot of people have been doing over the last few years.
Mr. McCall, I need to ask you to wrap up.
Is, is important. So continue to do that work and to place programs like that. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Addington is up. Mrs. Greenler is following.
Marcy Myers-Addington. I, a lot of the things that I was going to talk about, Mr. McCall mentioned, but I wanted to thank, wanted to thank the staff and the administration and that they took the action years ago after Sandy Hook. I still remember that day, like it was yesterday. I was the pickup that day and a lot of emotion. But anyway, thank you. It was a big help afterwards with the security and that. So I commend the board for looking for background check. I also want to say that, you know, the Hope Squad was brought in. I think that has helped with our mental health issues. SEL, I see my daughter is doing a vol, is working at Creme de la Creme summer camp. And some of the things that she said that they're being taught with the kids when they're hitting that, let's step back, let's use our words. Why are you upset? That is SEL, social emotional learning. Don't hit, let's talk about it. How do we fix it? The fact that we have that in the schools, the mental health professionals that come in, the guidance counselor, all that is contributing. It still does not fix our problem now. And I think one of the hardest days was after Parkland. And I asked my, talked to my girls about it, and they said, it's only a matter of time. With this many kids in a school, it's only a matter of time. And that broke my heart. So I think we need to continue to work with our kids. The availability of weapons, you have no control over that. But, you know, to work with our kids, to help them manage and that we do what we can, and some of the stuff we have to leave to others. So I appreciate all the stuff that you guys are doing and our teachers that are just rock stars, in my opinion. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Addington. Mrs. Greenler.
My name is, my name is Penny Greenler. This is very short. I just wanted to remind the school board that because Beyonce sings at a halftime show doesn't mean that racism and discrimination is over. The students at Lakota frequently use the N-word verbally in the hallways, and there are plenty of racial posts on Facebook as well or other social media. So it is not over, and we have to keep an eye on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Greenler. As we announced several meetings ago, we are now going to answer questions at meetings. But there are a couple of questions here that I will ask Mrs., Mr. Miller to get back to people on. Thank you to the rest of you for expressing your concerns and thoughts. We do appreciate this opportunity to hear from our community. Mr. Miller, did you have anything you wanted to say?
You, I can respond back to the individuals, I think.
Okay.
Madam President, I do have something that I just want to bring up real fast.
One moment, please. Mrs. Logan, did you have anything? Mrs. Bodie?
Yeah, I think this, I just would like to go back to the conversation of you were saying that, or people are saying that critical race theory is not in the school. But we do not have a public definition of critical race theory. So how can you say whether or not it is? Either way.
Mrs. Bodie, could you talk to the board, please, and not to the audience?
Either way, if you're for it or against it, we do not have a definition, nor has the board decided whether it is good or bad. And so how can we say that is not in the schools when we do not have a clear definition of what critical race theory is? And I think for those that are concerned, if it is in our schools, looking at it as a negative thing, I think we are concerned for our education, our children's educational welfare, and that is why we do not want it in the school system. And we are concerned for the safety of our students mentally with critical race theory and what it teaches. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Bodie. We'll move to our final item on the agenda, which is a motion for adjournment. Thank you, board, also for your flexibility in moving to a different time and a different date based on what we were doing with software changes across the administration. Appreciate that. So I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Adi. Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Mrs. Logan?
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
And Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes. Thank you all for coming out today.